Today is Tuesday, November the 19th, 2019. It's 6:30 and we're at the Ringo Elementary Cafeteria. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I would like to have a moment of silence for the casting of one of our own teachers, Dolanda Goncias. Thank you very much, and she rest in peace. Section two.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section three, approval of limits. On the review of board meeting, October the 8th, 2019, and for this special board meeting, October 14th, 2019, real motion.
Take the vote.
Real motion by Mr. Riaad. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcia, on your favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Section four, public forum. We have four requests. One by Ms. Linda Melita Lauel, Mr. Roswell Barrera, Ms. Lydia Garcia Sainz, and Ms. Maria Elia Ramos. They want to discuss something from item H.
They're throwing me to the lions, right? Well, as some of you remember, about three to four years ago, I was appointed to the Revive Fort Ringo Commission, I'm gonna call it. And we have worked hard, but I'm here to tell you a reality check. As a volunteer organization, we're done. We cannot do anymore. This afternoon, I was at the Lee House greeting forty-some people from the Valley on my own time, Mr. Roswell Barrera's time. I got there an hour early to clean up. As far as contributions monetary, I think where we're at as a nonprofit organization, but we cannot go further. It's a year bald court. You are the ones that can do something. Ms. Gina and Ms. Erica did a great job as our president of the committee. However, they had little or no power as far as getting funds. I mean, well, I don't care going into all the details. But we've done miracles with what we could, but we can't go further. It's up to you to hire somebody, appoint somebody from within the school district, from outside the school district, a professional, that you wanna pay him, you know, whatever. But it's going to take leadership. It's going to take a leadership that will have power within the school district. Is that a reality check or not? Okay?
To be followed. That was nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramos.
Good evening. I don't know where this is supposed to be, but I'm here because we are a highly historical area, and we have highly historical properties, and Fort Ringo is from there. And we know that you all have many issues that you work on, and these are all in education, and it's very important. But I am here as a person of the community because I would like for us to build our historical properties. And you're asking that this project of Revive Fort Ringo be empowered to go forward so that we can create more interest in our community, because many of our students believe they have to go away because there's nothing here for them to develop. And unfortunately, in many cases, that's true, but we have many resources that we can develop, and that's what we would like to grow on. All political things aside, we have many, many, many students that go, they're going away to university. And I believe that we need to strengthen their pride in themselves and in our community so that they go, they're not afraid to go into what's basically a white world. Let's develop the areas that we as citizens can do aside from the administration and the work that you all do. It has nothing to do with interfering with anybody. It just has to do with the other issues to build our community, and that's what my interest is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of our school district. It is an honor for me to be here before you, to inform you that I am 100% to revive Fort Ringo. This is a historical jewel for us. And also personal, my oldest sister was born at Fort Ringo Hospital. And we have so much to offer our students, our community members, and we also have tourists who come and take a tour on the Bessie, and it is always a joy to see their faces. And we are known beyond Rio Grande City. As the president of the Women's Club of Rio Grande City, which was federated in 1927, I'm always very proud to mention wherever we go about our historical Fort Ringo and what it means to our community. So please support us, and I can guarantee that this would be something so beautiful to have people come to our community. And when you have tourists, you know what it means. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, we're in the school district. Before I start my topic, I wanna thank the school district for the great Veterans Act program that every year, it gets better and better, and I wanna thank this under the direction of Ms. Cynthia Basan. I wanna thank Dr. Erica Guerra, Dr. Leti Trevino, Mrs. Medley, Eddie Sainz, and I attended the meetings, and let me tell you, these guys, they're very detailed in what they do, everything from what they're gonna eat, what the program's gonna look like. They put a lot of work into this, and I saw it this year, and I've seen it in the past. And I'm very, very grateful that we have some dedicated administrators and teachers that they go above and beyond, and as I talk to the other veterans, they like doing this. They're very happy that we continue to do this. And the little moment that I spoke with Mr. Rick Diaz from Channel 5, he says, "I always like coming to Durand because you guys are one of the most patriotic communities in the Rio Grande Valley." That makes me feel proud that we still have that. All right, now back to the issue. Today, we had a tour of forty-three tourists coming in today, and they're not only from the Valley, but they're from upstate, the Texas Tropical Trail Commission. And these people, they greet us, they see what we have, city and fort. And they're very happy, they like what we have, and of course, they say that our buildings need to be fixed, la la la. And, but I was very concerned, our handicap ramp, we had a lady going up there, she almost fell. And we have submitted a work order since 2015 to fix the ramp, and administrator here just threw it away, they don't care about Fort Ringo, so the problem is real. We got problems inside our school district who don't care about our fort, and they give you the lip service, "Oh yeah, yeah, great, great thing." And then I have you right here, we've been talking about this since the last superintendent, "Great job, let's do this, let's do that." This is the last, if the building falls, it's gonna be because of you guys. I'm done. I've been retired for two years, and I've tried. Powerpoint, briefing slides, out of my own money, this and that, boom, out the door. You guys have your own personal problems, politics, deal with it. You guys serve us. I'm sick and tired, and I'm very, very upset. I'll do what Mr. Ramon did two, three years ago. My God, I'm the nicest guy you can meet, but let me tell you one thing. After thirty-four years of working in a professional organization, and you've seen the impeachment trials, I come up from a professional organization where you tell me you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it. But I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to do. Everybody says, "Ross, why didn't you come back to Durand?" You tell them at graduation, "Kids, come back to Durand," blah, blah, blah. Well, I'm back, all right? I came because of my mother, she passed away, now what? Now what am I gonna do? The city has politics right here. They get offended with every little thing you say. Hey, guess what? It's the big world. You're gonna get offended, you're not gonna agree, but we're gonna see each other at HUB, we have to shake hands. I have never seen a community, this is not my community anymore. 1984, look at my video, class president, I said, "I'm gonna come back because I love this place, but I hate what it has become." Bickering, "We don't care, we want your buildings." I don't know what else to do. It's up to you guys. I'm not angry at you, I'm just upset that we cannot come together as a community. At the federal level, we'll divide it. State level, divide it. And now here, come on, guys, we can do better. This is not Trump's fault, it's ours. We see each other every day. We can do this, it's not about me. If I'm the problem because I offend somebody with what I say, I'll step out, I'll work behind their curtains. I've done that before. Don't make it about me. When I saw those gentlemen, older gentlemen or older ladies today, they're like, "Oh, Mr. Barrera, this is amazing. What about that celebration of the 175th?" What was I gonna tell them? I can't, I can't commit. We're just volunteers. We did the Sesquicentennial in 1998, that community came together. Some of you were here, some of you were not. The only person older than me here is Mr. Villarreal and Vilma. But in 1998, the community came together, and you know what they said? "Let's do it again in twenty-five years." Well, guess what? I've been trying to do this since 2013. Bacho, no, that's stuff, and ah, I got tired. We all have our limits, and this is my limit. So with that, the fort is yours, and whatever happens to it is gonna be under your command. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ramon. Section five, information and proposal from superintendent and staff.
Mr. President, members of the board and community members, I would like to announce that the school board and trustees and myself are extremely proud of our students who competed and participated in UIL in sports. Let me begin by saying that after thirty-four years, our Rio Mighty Rattlers are district champs. And along with them, our freshman and JV team also district champs. Ruya High School Football Team qualified for the playoffs, third seed. Ruya High School Girls Cross Country Team, second in district, advanced to regionals as a team, and one student advanced to state. Rio High School Cross Country Boys, one student advanced to regionals. Rio High School Mighty Rattler Band advanced to UIL State Marching Contest, and our middle school football and cross-country students also have great accomplishments. What an honor. You make us proud. These students will be recognized at the district board meeting. Congratulations to our students and to their coaches. We have the best of the best.
Thank you, Mrs. Basan, and congratulations to all the coaches and all the staff that prepared our kids to this one. Item number one.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we didn't take attendance for purposes of applause.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm gonna have to go home. Mr. Eric Ramírez?
Present.
Mr. Vasilio Riaad?
Here.
Mr. Lloyd Bestio?
Present.
Mr. Daniel Garcia?
Present.
Mrs. Lopez?
Yes.
And myself, I think that we asked this. We do have a forum, thank you, Mr. Ramírez.
Mr. Ramos.
Item number one, recognition.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mrs. Garcia, Superintendent of Schools, and all colleagues and everyone that's present today. It gives us great honor to recognize our campus Teachers of the Month. Most teachers do not receive the admiration and respect that they deserve, and many of our teachers work extremely hard, dedicating their lives to educating the children of our district. They do not do it for the paycheck or praise. Instead, they teach because they wanna make a difference. Teachers influence students in many ways than most people understand. And in effort to recognize the hard work and dedication of our teachers, the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District initiated a recognition program. For monthly, we will acknowledge and appreciate one teacher from every campus. Each campus selected a teacher from their campus based on their criteria. This evening, we are honored to inform the RDC CISD School Board that the following teachers are deserving of such recognition. And on behalf of the Rio Grande City CISD School Board, administration, and community, we express our sincere gratitude for their outstanding performance each and every day. Thank you for being such amazing teachers and for all that you do to make lifelong impacts on our students. Your words of wisdom guide them and give them courage to chase their dreams. Your influence lives forever in their hearts and in their minds, and tonight, we are honored in you, our teachers of October. At this time, I ask the principals to please join us in presenting the certificates to their campus teacher. We'll start with Algo Bonito Elementary, Principal Ms. Isabel Peña, and Teacher of the Month, Ms. Esa Solís. Ruya Elementary, Mr. TJ Gonzalez, Principal, Teacher of the Month, Niguita Peña. La Unión Elementary, Principal, Lori Devino, Teacher of the Month, Delma Venencia. Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary, Mr. Daniel Ramirez, Teacher of the Month, Reyna Navarro. JNO Nojosa Elementary, Principal, Marisa Saldiva, Teacher of the Month, Gina M. Zandval. Ringo Elementary, Principal, Idani Salinas, Teacher, Mona Macías. Mrs. Mona was not able to make it today, her mother is ill. Ace Elementary, Principal, Omar Peña, Teacher of the Month, Vanessa Trevino. Alberto and Celia Barrera Elementary, Principal, Nora Rivera, Teacher of the Month, Cindy M. Peña, aren't able to make it tonight. Joque Guerra Elementary, Principal, Laura Barrera, Teacher of the Month, Yasmin Álvarez. General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, Principal, Teresa Arazola, Teacher, Humberto de los Reyes. AC2E Middle School, Principal, Monique Palacios, Varian, and Teacher of the Month, Isabel López. Ringo Middle School, under the direction of Lilian Jones, presenting for her, Miguel Guerrero, Dean of Instruction, Teacher of the Month, Eliamar García. Verens Middle School, Principal, Hendrik Cantú, Teacher of the Month, Blanca Yal. Ruya Middle School, Principal, René Peña, Teacher of the Month, Norberta Salate. Rio Grande City High School, Principal, Jorge Peña, Teacher of the Month, Cynthia Alaniz. Early College High School, Principal, Lorena Gorena, and Teacher, Alista Delgado. Ruya High School, Principal, Adolfo Peña, Teacher, Jorge Guerra. Alternative Center, Mr. Julio Eguiap, Principal, Teacher, Antonio Cantú. Congratulations to all our teachers of October, the month, thank you for your dedication and hard work. At this time, we'd like to have our administration and board members take a picture with our teachers of the month. And it is a great honor to be able to work with outstanding campus administration, central office administration, and campus staff. Congratulations, teachers and staff. Congratulations to all those teachers. I know that it takes hard work, dedication, and commitment. Thank you so much for your service.
Mr. President, if I could just say a few words. Congratulations to all the teachers for a job well done. I know you spent tireless hours in working with kids. What can I say? And with that said, I wanna say a couple other things. We made it a point to come to this meeting. There was a meeting last week that was, basically, we're told an hour that they didn't have a quorum, and we three were ready to come, but they couldn't find one other one. We made it a point to come and celebrate with you, the teachers, because you deserve it. In saying that, again, congratulations, round of applause to the teachers. In saying that, I am going to be, I'm gonna leave, I have to leave, but I concur with the people from Revive Fort Ringo. but I concur with the people from Revive Fort Ringo. It is on our watch now. We need to go out there and preserve the crown jewel that we have, and we need to do something. It's on us. And the last thing, I'm glad to see that finally we thought about putting a new school in La Ruya. It's about time that La Ruya Middle School got a school. Hopefully, we can do that bond issue and get it done, because it's long overdue. Those facilities are very, very bad. So with that said, I have other things that I need to do, and death in the family and other things, so I will see. Thank you.
Item number two, announcement on Board Members Training required by tasking policy PVP. Miguel Azar Velasquez Junior exceeded requirement required training. Mrs. López completed required training. Dr. B completed required training. Noel Castillo exceeded required training. Mr. Daniel García exceeded required training. Mr. Eric Ramirez completed required training. Brasil Villarreal completed required training. Item number three, consider and take possible action on travel requests from Ruya High School.
Mr. President, if it's okay, I know we've had this agenda for about a week and a half now. Most of these items went through committee. Most of our questions have been answered by Administration. If I can make a motion to approve item three, with the exception of leaving out item five and item thirteen, if I can make a motion to approve the rest of the items from item three to item twenty-eight.
We have a motion by Mr. García. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number five.
Mr. President, members of the board, after consulting with the school attorney, we are asking that the board please table this item. We need to further study this contract.
I move that we table item five as recommended by superintendent.
We have a motion by Mr. García. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consider and take possible action on the following bids.
Mr. President, members of the board, we are here to recommend bids 2015 commercial carpet, and that one goes to Omeros Carpet Service for six months. Bid 2017 for concrete, and it goes to Lopez Ready Mix. Bid 2018 for janitorial supplies, and it goes to Gulf Coast and Rio Paper Supply. And on this one, we are recommending that we go on an item-by-item basis. Also, bid 2019, construction materials, goes to McCoys and Sherwin-Williams, and we also recommend that we go on an item-by-item basis. RFP 2021 for solid waste, I recommend that we table this item for the reason that we saw a significant increase in the fees, so we want to make an assessment on the fees and then make another recommendation.
I move that we approve item thirteen as presented by Chief Manager Watson.
We have a motion by Mr. García, second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Important information. Section seven, under authority of the Texas Government Code in section 551.071-551.084, we're now headed to closed session, and it is 7:05. We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. López. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have a motion on item E? We have a motion by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. López. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Motion on item F.
I move to approve item F as discussed in the second session.
We have a motion by Mr. García. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We have a motion on item G. We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. García. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have a motion on item H?
We want to see if you intend to collaborate, to allow the district to use something important for your timeline and it's easy for the district, and allow the district to receive this grant.
We have a motion by Dr. B. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. García. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item I, discussion and possible action on calling a bond election, providing for the conduct and the giving of notice of said election, and resolving other matters related thereto. Including, but not limited to developing the needs assessment for these facilities and related improvements. Do we have a motion on item I?
I move to approve item I. I discuss it in the second session.
We have a motion by Mr. García, second by Dr. B. Discussion, grabber presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, how is it possible? I believe we have seen these numbers before, but I would like to present them to the public also in terms of the action that we're taking in the city. I believe the presentation that passing, the past hours, will be different, but I'm gonna get right to the most important thing, which is how much money can you borrow and how much would it cost you in terms of a tax rate increase to borrow that money? The, we always have initial assumptions. Everything that we do for you, we base it on certain things that we know about the school district. And that is the front page of this presentation that I gave you. I think it was page three or four, the other one. Also, I thought it was important to present to you what your ADA is doing and what your values are doing, because values and ADA are what impact tax rates in the future. They have been a stability in the last few years. It may be that you will find a balance probably in ADA at some point in time, and also in values, now that your wind energy is, you know, becoming more fixed, you will. So, always, the main things that we're gonna be looking at for you is your financial crisis, and your loans, in order to keep your debt always in terms of tax rate, you know, the funds that are taxed rate increases. On page one, actually, it's now one, is, it looks like this. It says current debt by issue. If you'll notice, the last item there where it says in 1510, that particular item is, you have bonds from 2010. You have outstanding $37 million at your still-o. That's your new high school, our own, on the highway, seven. You have $23 million that are eligible to be refinanced in May. And we'll bring that up to you sometime in February or March. And when you refinance those bonds, you're gonna save approximately, the next page will show you, you're gonna save approximately $1.6 million in interest. And the way we've structured, when I'm gonna start talking about the debt payments and the tax rate, the way we structured it is, we did what we call front-loaded savings. Instead of taking $160 million, $1.6 million and dividing it by 20 years, we're front-loading the savings upfront in order to give a little bit of a break on the tax rate for the first five years. So what you have here is, I'm saying that we front-loaded half of it, so $162,000 a year is being applied to your new bonds passed the order tonight. $162,000 is one penny of the tax rate. So, whatever I'm talking about here, because of this refunding that you're gonna do, you're gonna be able to always save that penny. Now, if you look at page five where it says pre, pre means pre-new bonds. You look at that particular page, that is what your bond debt is right now, and it probably will be, through schedule, it's kind of like you have an amortization schedule for your home, a true schedule for the debt that you're having. And if you look at, and you look at that blank space in the middle, that will fill up with the bonds that we're gonna be talking about in a minute. So that, if you look at the far right, columns M and N, M is your tax rate. Right now, in the year 2020, your tax rate is 31 cents for the INS. With those 31 cents, you raise your share of the payment to make your payment on the debt that you currently have. That's a common, that's a common one that we're looking at in terms of how is that going to fluctuate up whenever you borrow any money, because you're gonna have to pick it up and be able to pay off for that money. Next year, 2021, whether you borrow any money or not, just based on your values and your increase in ADA, you're gonna have to go out with 1.92 cents to pennies to be able to apply all the payments that you have and for the bonds that you have outstanding. So yes, how it stays, this is your amortization schedule if you don't do anything. Now, we did two scenarios for you. And the first one is on page six, it says $35 million in new money. That borrowing $35 million for product and product that you're wanting. And we did it for 20 years. And then we did another one for 30. To see, to try to keep the tax rate as low as possible. And you find that the one for 20 years, which is on page six, your tax rate goes up, it's gonna go up, like I said, by 1.92 cents, two pennies. So in essence, it's going up, if you borrow $35 million in 2021, it's going up to 3.6 cents, which is actually about 1.6 cents for the money. And then, you will see the increases on page N, and then it kind of balances out. On page, the next page is a 30-year deal, and you're gonna notice that the tax rates do not vary that much. I had thought that you were going, that you weren't going to increase by so many pennies, but I think you're gonna find, when I finish talking, that 20 years maybe may not be a bad way to go for a particular transaction. The summary of the tax rate impact is a summary of those two. I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on those charts, because there's a lot of numbers and they're pretty complex. So I summarized it for you on page eight. And if you're motivated on the left-hand side, and it, look, it says summary of tax rate, it looks like this. 2019, which is the year that just ended, your MNO tax rate was $1.0839, and your INS tax rate was just 31 cents. And I put it down for 20 years and 30 years. So your total tax rate in 2019 was 1.39. 2020, which is the current year, and when I, when I talk about a number, when we say 20, it's the second part of 1920. 21 is the second part of 2021, so. So 2020 is the current year. Your tax rate, remember that we visited about this with you, went down by state. It was compressed by the state. You could no longer have 1.0839, the state said. You're gonna have 1.0125, too. The INS tax rate, which are the pennies that you need to pay your debt, the state doesn't have anything to do with that. The people, when they vote for a bond, they say, "I'm voting for this bond to do these facilities, and I'm voting to tax myself to pay for that bond." That's what we do when we vote for a bond. So, we say whatever is necessary, to tax ourselves whatever is necessary to pay for the bond. In this case, 31 cents are necessary, and that's what you have. For your tax rate, you look at both 20 and 30 years, went down from 1.3939 to 1.32. You gave your taxpayers a break of approximately seven pennies. You get over seven cents. Now, you might remember some of the discussions we had in the past, when we were trying to see if we could do it before you gave it away and do this particular transaction, and the timing was never good. So, what we need to do now is, if you have a bond election, is ask the taxpayers back for your six or seven cents. Not quite the six or seven, a nickel or that seven cents, coming up. The pre is what I talked about a minute ago. You do nothing, it's gonna look 1.0125. I said your 31 cents is gonna go up by about two cents, so it's gonna be 32.92 all the way across the 1.3417. You don't do anything, or the bond doesn't pass, or whatever. 21, the tax rate is gonna be 1.3417. Let me make a disclaimer here. There is another possibility that the state will compress the MNO of them. That 1.01 could be going down for you. You won't have a choice on that. So, if that goes down, of course, it's gonna bring down the overall tax rate. We won't know until, in this next legislative session. So, we won't know until 2020, summer of 2021. But, for right now, with the information that we have, you would be at 1.3417. In 2021, the same year, with new bonds, borrowing $35 million, your MNO tax rate will stay the same, as dictated by the state. But you will need, in addition to the 0.0192 cents that you're raising from 31 to 32.92, an additional 1.7 cents. So your tax rate, 32.92, instead of being 32.92, would be 34.61 in 2021, and across would be 1.356. And when I'm giving you these numbers, remember that I've already included the savings from the refunding that we're gonna do to repay. We're in there counting on those to save your money. In 2022 to 2027, you have another little bump in your tax rate, going from 34.51 to 37 cents, and it balances out for about 1.3958, which is what you were in 2019. You end up with a 1.39 tax rate, which is what you had before. I remember, the last thing we had discussed, trying to do it before, so you don't have to give a set of pennies and try to go get it back. So in reality here, you're going back to the amount that you had. Your net tax increase, this is probably one of the critical issues for you to decide. If you do a 20-year transaction, your net increase is going to be five and a half cents, 5.4 cents. If you do a 30-year transaction, your net increase would be four cents. So for 1.4 cents more, you could go into debt by 10 years. That's a decision that the board will make. It's a lot of information. You have until February the 14th to call the election. I know that you have around the 10:00 at the night, and to call it, choose to call it 9:00 is a motion already, second. You can do so. The last date that you'll be calling the election is February 14th of 2020. Your election day would be the 2nd of May of 2020. Usually, we'll sell bonds 30 days after that, and you will have your money probably by mid-June. The action that you will take, Mr. Garcia made a motion, and approving your, what you will be approving is that the finance team will begin to work with the administration, develop some public information, presentations. I think they would have been involved in those before, not a superintendent, but so have the members. So, to get the community informed as much as possible, so that when they're comfortable, they understand, not only what, the most important thing is to understand what they're getting for the kids in this community, also they have to also understand that they're making a commitment to pay for their debt. Are there any questions? I would love to ask.
So basically, we can get a new, renew our facility, and still be paying the same taxes that we pay right now?
Right. That you paid, that you paid in 2019?
Nineteenth.
May, yeah. You would get $35 million, and probably for what you pay right now, the other tax compression comes in, then you're gonna end up giving the tax rate back to 1.6 or 1.7 cents. But seemingly, you would have a brand new facility for the same amount. And actually, if you look at 2018, I think you were another sentence higher, you had given a break. This community was paying 1.45 or 1.46. And in 2018, you were forced by the state to give a break. This year, you were forced again to give a break. You've given back to the community about 13 or 14 cents. And a part of the public information that rules for the community will, of course, we forget, right? Once we get the money back, we're gonna give it back, but we gotta break it. But we're trying to ensure that we get across to our people that, you know, we were here, we were down, we were down again, and now we're asking you for that hope to build a brand new one. That's really better, somewhere. Questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Elsantis.
Thank you very much.
Motion by Mr. Garcia, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item J, motion on item J. I move to approve item J as discussed in the second session. We have a motion by Mr. Garcia, do we have a second? Second by Dr. B, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. There's no action needed on item K. Section nine, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Garcia, do we have a second? Second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're gonna sit down, which is now 8:27.